Jenny, are you ready to go next with the the paid family medical leave?
Yes, I sure can. So something I wanted to put on the council's radar is as of now, the state will require all employers, cities included, to participate in a paid family medical leave plan. So I provided an high level overview of the estimated financial impacts for the employer, for the city and for employees. So that you're aware of the dollars potentially involved. Was there an echo? Okay, got it. There is certain, I believe that there would be an option if the city would like to implement its own internal plan. Then the state would have to sign off on that plan, but then you wouldn't be required to contribute to these payroll, additional payroll deductions. So that's something for the council to consider as you work through the budget process. Kiki can work with you to develop a policy if you'd like to pursue that. Maybe other cities will be doing that. You can kind of share resources, things like that. But this is something as of now that's, that's coming likely. There, there may be some adjustments. I know as part of the state budget process that legislators are working on this as part of other things, but want to put it on your radar and answer any high level questions now. If you have any otherwise, just know that this is part of the budget for next year.
If we decide to go on our own, when would we have to have the, our policy into the state for their okay?
I would say the sooner the better, assuming they're accepting them because they're going to need time to review, right? And then make sure that everything get the okay before January 1st, so you're compliant.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And it sounds like Jenny, from our previous conversation, you had said if we pursued our own plan, it would cost the city less money and the employees less money, correct?
Correct. What you would essentially be implementing is additional leave time that you'd be providing as a benefit to employees, but the out of pocket cash, I think would be eliminated, you know, impact to another payroll line item. So that's what I know to be at this point.
So do we need to give clear direction on that tonight or?
You don't have to. I would just say, you know, in the next couple of months, you're definitely going to want to pick a direction so that staff knows how to adjust and plan.
How is this different than the sick and safe?
It's an additional paid family leave program.
It was implemented by the state, I think, I think it was that last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I knew it was coming, but I didn't know what the differentiating factors were between the two.
So they just approved two different types of benefits and E S S T was implemented faster than this paid family leave. So this is now the, the second one coming.
Are we on C1? I apologize, I had to step out. C1?
Yes.
Yeah, we just went through this at my company. It's a, it's a doozy. It's ridiculous. And we're working in 14 states concurrently and this is, Minnesota's is the worst when it comes to benefit.
Yep. Any other discussion on this one? Otherwise, okay, then the next one we'll move to is that, what, still with Jenny, the admin clerk? Finance budget scenarios?
Yes. So I provided two initial scenarios and then I did put at your places an additional option two for both the reduced and the flat budget. So with the reduced budget, the items in pink, kind of purple pink are just sort of supplies and other line items that as a department, we feel like could be tightened up a little bit. Yes, yes. To try to adjust, not ideal because it doesn't provide as much flexibility, but I'm certainly trying to get as tight of a budget as possible. Also adjusting school and training from two conferences a year to one conference a year for staff. And then with the reduced budget, mostly eliminating the capital reserve funding that is going in, that's for the most part, it's computers. But if there was other technology that needed to be purchased, that would potentially come from this line item. The new information you have today is the same information that was provided. However, the mayor asked for a budget scenario. If the city administrator position was not filled, so that provides you that information as well.
Did everyone on the council get the second one? If the city administrator wasn't filled? Okay. Yeah. So you guys saw that if that wasn't filled, it's a savings of forty-four percent in this particular budget or $181,000. And then the other thing.
It was half our levy last year.
Yeah. And the other thing I had asked Jenny to provide too is just so we could have visibility into it. You know, so here on the reduced budget of the seven percent down, the admin capital reserve is $500 proposed and there's seventy-three, seventy-five in that admin capital reserve already. So in initial conversations, I felt like reducing that wouldn't be
We have money to pay for, yeah, some, you know, if, if a computer were to die tomorrow, we'd have some money to, to replace that. So that's you know, that's there and available. Looking to keep something just to be able to, to fund that. Yes.
If the city administrative position is not filled, that's going to include the wages, salary, employer, employer, P R A, FICA, paid insurance, Medicare.
Workers' comp.
Or comp and then it's those.
And potentially savings on training, different additional training opportunities.
Could reduce that as well. Yes.
What does M C F O A stand for again?
Clerks and Finance Officers Association.
So I feel like we would talk more about specifically this in our meeting at seven under new business.
Topic. Yeah, this one topic.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
But in general, on these proposed budgets, from my lens, I felt like the reduced one in, in this particular budget or department, it didn't seem a bad path forward. But I don't know what everyone else's feedback is.
So are we looking at cutting out, not replacing the city admin?
Oh no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying in gen, well, because we will discuss that in, in the next meeting, but what I'm saying is the original reduced budget with just going down the seven percent by, you know, putting less money away in the capital reserve, doing one training a year versus multiple trainings. Just shaving some off in different areas to get to that savings of about 30,000. I didn't think seemed a bad forward approach to continue on for this particular budget.
Jenny, what is the, what, what would the step three, city administrator salary not to exceed step three?
Oh.
What is that dollar amount?
Yeah, what is that dollar amount?
Oh.
Tell you, I, I did provide just for reference the pay scale, but that is.
So it's per hour.
Yep. So 108,000 essentially.
Okay.
Does everyone feel like we could continue moving forward with that seven percent savings path? Or do you guys feel other scenarios?
Well, you're, I think your question is.
But again, a deeper conversation when we get to the next, but I'm saying just for the sake of now, because we're not to that deeper conversation.
Do I like the idea of the proposed dollars? Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's the in my business, when we go through budgets, every quarter we call, especially when we're picking them, we call it Kmart blue light special when we're trying to trim in certain areas. But for a broader discussion, being cognizant of, of workload, of being all on the same page, I think that piece table till regular meeting.
Okay. And Jenny, did you want to? I don't know if these other two made everyone's packets.
I had them just here for them to pick up. So the mayor also asked for just a copy of the current council 2025 budget and the economic development budget where we budget for contributions to Blade Act and the Initiative Foundation. So as far as the mayor council budget, I, I will defer to Mayor Carnahan for that, but just wanted to provide those two items so that gives you dollar amounts for that as well.
We, is there a dollar contribution fee that we have for being a part of the chamber?
No, the city is not allowed to.
I just want to double check.
A member. Yes.
I just paid my.
Yeah, and I pay.
My dues for that. Talk about Blade Act for a second. What's, what's your opinion on the benefit that we've gotten from Blade Act and for that membership fee?
It's not a simple answer to that question because it's requires a mutable engagement to say the city has an interest in doing X type of project. Would Blade Act be the right avenue or would another, the Initiative Foundation or whatever organization, would that be the proper outlet to, to engage and to utilize our services? So whether you're talking about Region Five, Initiative Foundation, Blade Deck, they're all available and I would say they all for, for good or bad, they all operate in a similar fashion where they're here and they will support us. We just need to engage on now. That could change, but that's my experience historically here and in Cross Lake and even at the school with how these organizations kind of function. So you seek out their services and then they work with you to.
Right. That's kind of where I was at with it, with my business, because we were a Blade Act member for 2024 and I elected to not renew and go strictly the chamber route only. In regards to what the Minnesota League of Cities is doing for us, is there likes services that the league's going to be able to provide in lieu of say, we elect to forego the Blade Act membership?
No, no economic development.
They are exclusive of each other.
Correct.
But a question that I would have is if we we don't give Blade Act a significant amount per year, right? It's $3,000.
Three eighty thousand, two hundred fifty.
Thirty-two fifty, yes.
So if we were not to make that contribution moving forward, does that mean they're no longer a partner with the city? Because if they, if they exist to provide economic development for this area, right?
I mean, they, they would certainly work with, you know, businesses within our community, right? And that I think happens more than we're made aware of. But I, I don't, I can't answer the question about partnering with the city on projects if, if we're not a, a member.
I think a lot of the initiatives that I've come to learn from Tyler Glenn and them is that they have some priority items that they have gotten from feedback from businesses and local governments. Baxter Brainerd, affordable housing, how can they help drive that? For being one, I think I would say it's a top three initiative for them. It's my takeaway, but it has something that I would ask ourselves is what is Nisswa going to be providing to help drive those initiatives? If it might be worth review for consider cutting.
I would also argue that the city of Nisswa, even before that conversation, has a ton of work to do in the way of planning and zoning in our current ordinances. Because a lot of this stuff, affordable housing and stuff, you know, just quite simply is not allowed in the city in this one, so many different manners. Apartments, height regulations, you know, all sorts of components. That, that I believe the city has a lot of steps to do. You know, if you look around this town, not a whole lot's changed in 20 years. You know, in the way of this, you look at, you go north to Peak Lot, you go south to Brainerd, Crosby, Cross Lake, look at those, the housing, the, you know, the development aspects where a company like this is useful for is happening all around us. It's not happening in the city. And a lot of it has to do not with this information. It's, it's like great, come on in, work with us, but we don't allow this here. We don't allow a three story building in town right now. We don't allow private roads in this town right now. We don't allow, you know, buildings over twenty-five hundred square feet for auxiliary structures for all sorts of reasons. You know, and that stuff that Stephen's working on, you know, back there that he's identifying too. And I believe that would be a fundamental step that needs to happen before we can really engage with somebody like this to move forward. Because.
Completely agree.
Right? I mean, it's just we're engaging here, but we're not allowing anybody to do anything. And so that, that fundament, fundamentally needs to change first before, you know, but then I would see, yeah, down the room, there'd be lots of room for engagement with this, but you know, even the, the corridor that's been talked about, the previous coverage on, you know, the highway 371 business district, the land that we just bought, all that. Before we do this, we have to look at planning and zoning. So that's my opinion.
Question Jenny, what is the I F subscription?
Initiative Foundation. Similar, but different focuses like mentioned.
The only thing I found a little confusing and I, I don't disagree, like we should be good partners in our community and area, but also like using taxpayer dollars to donate to foundations or charitable organizations versus letting the taxpayers decide themselves if they're a business owner and they want to make that contribution on behalf of their business or as an individual, right? Because when you look at the different foundations and this Initiative Foundation, one of them, you know, if people have foundations set up for their family, they can certainly make those donations out of that foundation or there's ways to do it. You know, to save on your taxes and whatnot, instead of telling our community, hey, we're going to take, you know, five thousand a year dollars this year and we're going to go give it to these organizations instead of letting those folks decide, hey, I'm really passionate about this organization, that one, that one, and they donate on their own and it could be much larger, right? One individual could end up giving, you know, six figures or something to an organization. So that was kind of my only thing. But again, not to send the message that we don't want to be good partners with the organizations in our area, but just also thinking about this isn't really our money, it's other people's money. So. Okay. And you guys aren't, might not like this one. But why I asked Jenny to print the mayor council proposed budget is because I thought if we're looking at ways to try to save the taxpayers' money in cut in all areas, our council member and mayor salaries on the table as well. Council members get paid 300 a month, mayor gets paid 350. I would be willing to cut that for myself to save money back to the taxpayers. But again, it's, you know, everybody's involved and people are giving their time. So I didn't want to make that assumption, but I wanted to just bring it up for conversation.
We get paid for this?
Yeah, you get 300 a month. So if you look at the budget for us to be paid for all these council meetings and special meetings, 20, oh, not, not a lot, but you know what I mean?
That adds up.
Twenty-five thousand is still 25,000.
Yeah, it is. I think that would show, I mean, the dollar impact maybe. Say you cut the salaries of us by 10%.
Yeah.
Still a nice show of effort to the community that we're serious. And that we care. So I for one am in favor of that.
I don't, I didn't know how everyone else would feel. So I just wanted to bring it up for dialogue.
Yeah, I guess, you know, just more tomato soup and grilled cheese than for me.
You look like a ramen guy.
No, I think it's a good idea.
10%? Or did you have something else in mind? Or cut it entirely?
I, I was just bringing it up for conversation.
Is there a, well, I think the statute's here for compensation.
Yeah. Is that what that's there for? That we can't change it this year?
So you, so you can, there's a method which you can adopt an interim ordinance that would then either state the new amount or, you know, credit or whatever that was that you can enact and it does say, shall be in effect for 12 months unless another period of time is specified in the ordinance. So if the council, if there's consensus, however you'd like to move forward with that, and again, you don't have to say tonight, but you could in theory, I would say at the May council meeting, if you had a draft ordinance amendment, you could have a public hearing and you could adopt that reduction in wages for pick your period of time. That would then make that effective. So just so you know how that process would work, they'd have to, we'd have to draft ordinance language to present for your approval, similar to other ordinance amendments.
Yeah. I mean, I'm in favor of it, but again, I didn't want to, you know, I know people view we are already public servant, you know, that it truly is civil service. So if other council members felt like, hey, you know, I come here for the meetings, I serve as a liaison, I put a lot of work in, it's only $300, I don't want to cut. I didn't want my peers to feel insulted or anything, but I just wanted to bring it up for dialogue. So do you have any views?
I'd say leave it as it is.
Drafting ordinance.
Okay. Well, we can see what we want to discuss and maybe what comes forward in May. Okay, sounds good. Was Stephen next?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I prepared a reduced budget, a flat budget and two scenarios of growth budgets, all of which including a reduction in employer paid insurance, as I am not currently elected for health coverage. I currently elect that through my spouse's employer. So that resulted in a significant allowance to reduce the budget. In the reduced budget scenario, I also reduced the professional services allocation to 35,000, down from 37,500, which was budgeted in 2025. That allowed me to achieve the threshold of 7.93% reduction. In my flat budget scenario, including the reductions, I also introduced an ask for permitting software to be added to dues and subscriptions estimated at about $10,000 year one, using two cost estimate quotes that I got in 2024. In that scenario of the flat, it still had, you know, something added in, but achieving a reduction of budget of 0.6%. In the growth budgets, I introduced school and training budget allowances for the A I C P certification and Certified Building Official Limited, as it was on the job description for my role. So kind of preparing for that certification pathway. And Arc G I S Pro Associate Certification, as we have now Arc G I S Pro as a platform for different things like Public Works and Sewer. I've been shared the admin access for that program to assist in the public works and the guys in the field with their applications as needed. Just to be in-house kind of reference for that. Option B on that, I also I increased the professional services budget based on figures that we had in 2024. Professional services for my department is something that's pretty hard to gauge. It's going to be developmentally driven based on how many complicated applications come in like flats. And so it's kind of one of those ones where we are just trying to observe a trend and, and hit it on the mark as best as we can. So happy to answer any questions on these scenarios.
I have one.
Sure.
So the cost of living and inflation adjustments, is that an adjustment down? You're proposing based off of including that in there?
No, those are figures provided by Jenny during the budget scenario process of, I forget what they were, 3.5% for.
So all departments were given the same COLA percentages and things to apply to their wages, just as a starting point and we were consistent. So so his wages reflect a small increase, you know, 25 to 26. When I look at the individual line items, the difference is for the health insurance removal, because he's not utilizing that currently.
Yeah.
And that's a significant number. So.
Correct.
So my question, when I had chatted with Stephen about the, like a combination of these budgets, like the reduced and then some of the items that he had put in like in flat. So one thought I had or and it's kind of along the lines of like the mayor council salaries is the amount we pay for like commission and committee members. Like if those were to just be cut away, that would save 5,200 from the budget. And then on capital reserve, he has about 8,000 to put away, but if that like maybe was brought down to 3,000. But then if he really needs this new permitting software to help him do his job better, be more efficient and whatnot, because in the capital reserve budget for planning and zoning, there is almost $60,000. Couldn't we just pay for that permitting software out of the capital reserve and then we're still putting three grand in? And in theory, if the the stipend for the, for the P and Z commission went down to zero, which would have to be a council vote, we'd be showing a savings, but we'd still be giving Stephen additional resources for his position, his department.
And for the $10,000 figure there, that was based on an average again of two quotes and that was the year one amount. So it's higher when you have to implement the software. There's the training of staff that goes into that. I think it's like a three month period based on the averages that we got on those quotes. And then the annual costs were about two thirds of that rolling forward. Then I felt that dues and subscriptions would be the appropriate placement of that in further budget scenarios if we adopt the software. So.
Oh, and also in that 58,000 reserve, some of that, what was being set aside for was a downtown master plan, which as we all know is right? So then I thought, again, we're not, we don't need that money set aside for that anymore. So why not use it to help him? And try to, again, this is a department where I felt we could see the savings in, but I don't know how you guys feel. So.
Yeah, the only thing I'd probably say is like the COLA and the not taking out the health insurance would probably still be in the budget, you know, something happens, changes, he'd still be eligible for it.
Oh yeah, for sure.
It's a cash cost, cost savings, but however we want to do it, you know, it's still staying in the budget, but more of a cash thing.
Historically, just from a process perspective, usually midsummer, we just sort of take a snapshot of the employees and what their elections are, and that's just what we build into the budget. That may change and we are just fluid with it and just recognize that that's a benefit that they're eligible for if something happened, life event type of thing. So we try not to overinflate the budget with something we know isn't necessary. But obviously if somebody needed, had a life change, we would, we would provide that. So we just try to at one point in time say, this is what it is. And then we move forward with that, those assumptions in the, the future budget.
And then I'll just point out at the bottom of my memo, I have 17,994 budgeted for 2025 that is projected to be unexpended if no life change occurs. I don't know what the process would look like, but rather than that just shifting over into the general fund, maybe it could be suggested to do a later year end review of whether or not I've used that or had that life change occurred and then transfer it into the capital reserve budget for my department in case of a life change event in the future, like setting it aside. I don't know that process wise would be impactful or not, but just to budget it and in case of something to happen so that it didn't impact the budget next year or in subsequent years. So.
Anyone? No, thanks, Stephen.
That's good. You're welcome.
I think Amber is next.
Please.
It, it went out of order. I think it's out of order from them.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to explain the proposed park budget scenarios and shed some light on what is presented in front of you. So to achieve a 7% reduction, the most significant decreases were 10,500 in parks, other pay and 15,000 from professional services. The proposed reductions would result in the removal of winter seasonal staff, which means the warming house will be closed. The rink lights would not be turned on at night and maintenance would not be carried out on the weekends. Staff could still flood the rinks to. Staff could still flood the rinks to continue to offer the amenity just with the reduction in service. The proposed reduction to professional services means we would not have funds allocated in the budget to put towards advancing city park planning. Any necessary funds to cover the cost of site planning and materials or services for public outreach would need to be funded from another source. It's the goal of the Parks Department to offer recreational amenities for all ages and all seasons. In all three budget scenarios, maintaining or growing the capital reserve was a priority. The funds were kept in the budget to support the Parks Department Capital Improvement Plan and possibly help to advance the city park improvements. It is necessary to maintain and grow these funds to support Nisswa's infrastructure long term. Proposing to remove the warming house and ice maintenance services is not a suggestion that comes out with, that comes without tremendous consideration. If it's the council's desire to reduce park funds, the recommendation is to remove those services in order to keep funds to help maintain and improve. Infrastructure. Without a definitive path forward to pay for proposed park improvements. We are in jeopardy of needing to remove infrastructure and ultimately losing both the amenity and the service altogether. Happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of ways uh, that we can look at this and shift things up or down or in or out or change the amounts, so. Thank you.
Mark, you, you probably should comment first or any perspective on it, because you're the parks liaison.
I guess I have a question. How many uh, baseball games were played on the baseball field last year?
Um, of all age groups?
Yeah, and don't we have a, the Nisswa League too?
Um, we have a few different recreation program age groups. Um, we run the Thurlow League, which is. Um, we run T-ball, baseball that use it, May and June, end of May and June.
I'm talking about actually like baseball games, like baseball.
So there's the Nisswa Lightning, they nine to twelve home games. And then each year, it's um, a little bit different with Pequot Schools, they'll rent it for their. Um, eighth grade C squad, um, so those are varying April and May. Then throughout the summer, there's a few different groups like the Baseball Association and. Brainer Baxter will rent a couple of different games, hit and miss throughout the year. Um, the Diamond Club will rent out a couple of different days. Um, sometimes it's softball field, sometimes it's the baseball field. And so I'll say it's a varying amount, but in a lot of different leagues and areas.
Would we say twenty would be on average for all those combined?
For just the baseball field or for both?
Just baseball field, you know, stuff that actually needs the baseball field, and not, not the Thurlow, not the T-ball.
So for baseball field, actual games from youth to adult, I, yeah, twenty.
And practices?
And there's practices there too. So there's varying fees for different rentals.
Do we know expense for like fertilizer, time mode, you know, I'm on, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know. We have the hockey rink and the cost of the hockey rink, but we, have we ever evaluated the cost of the baseball field? And which one gets more use, the baseball field or the hockey rink in a season or in a year's time, you know?
Um, I don't have all that broken out, usually, um. You know, fertilizer, egg lime, chalk, clay, things like that, um.
Water, you know, it's getting irrigated the whole.
Yep, the irrigation, um, we replace all the heads ourselves. Um, and so there's some supply upkeep. It's not an every year purchase amount like egg lime, we can sometimes go a season, season and a half, like I'll get it in the fall and then go a whole. Year, you know, and get it the next spring. Um, so supply wise, it's. I could add it up, um, supply wise is probably under five thousand.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, and then like labor on it, you know, are we doing twenty-three to twenty-four mowings?
Um, we mow about sixteen hours collectively between all the park land a week. So not just in the ball fields, but all park land, Nisswa Lake Park. Give or take sixteen hours.
Yeah, I was just, you know, my question's, you know, back to between that and the hockey, you know. What is more, what is being more utilized, you know, is one, is one costing more expensive than the other?
The staffing of the hockey rink is significant in relation to the ball field. That's an extra ten thousand five hundred. Um, otherwise, full-time maintenance staff, it, they're covered either way. Winter or summer, um. It's. You know, we still run the Zamboni, we still have propane, so there's. Equipment and those costs between both seasons. Um, big differentiator within the Parks Master Plan, there was no proposal to remove or alter the infrastructure of the baseball field. Because of the lifespan that's left in it. Um, so most of the replacements for the fencing, the lighting are still about ten years out.
Yeah, just a question, I'm just trying to evaluate expense, you know, as a whole in the park and the baseball field takes up the most room, you know. As far as like time for maintaining, mowing, fertilizing, all that versus the time for the warming house, you know, when we're really comparing. La- labor hours, you know, um, I guess it'd be interesting to try and track that.
Well, if you're looking at full-time staff, that's just the budgeted amount. So if you want to allocate their time somewhere else, the budget's the same. How they spend their time would be the differentiator.
Yeah, correct, I'm just, you know, it'd be breaking it out for that. Uh, I'm, you know. I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we've heard the hockey rink so expensive to get, you know, is, but is the hockey rink really that expensive? Based upon the baseball field, you know, we'd have to know how many hours are being spent cut, mowing, maintaining, you know, on a weekly basis, you know, the. I get it that it's underneath one budget, but we're just comparing expense between hockey and baseball, you know.
If I were to cut, be able to cut expenses from the ball field, it'd be the purchase of egg lime and the purchase of fertilizers and. You can change the mow schedule to reduce how much fuel you buy. Um, but there's not a staffing component to it, so it's the infrastructure, and then there's the supply. So I can't cut my. Maintenance staff's hours, they're forty hours, they don't put overtime into it. So the only area to reduce ball field is through supplies.
Amber, in your opinion. If there's any reductions in what the park's providing to the community, how do you think that bodes for? The campaign that we're trying to actively push to have the park expansion and renovation. How do you think public perception would be?
It's awful, it's awful to have to cut services. It, it's becoming a reality. We. Have a lot of costs coming down the pipeline. Any way you want to look at it, whether it's repairing, replacing, improving. It's a tremendous undertaking. Um, the last thing we want to do is remove services, and I also. Don't want to have a safety issue. So it leaves us little choice at times, it's not. A decision that I take lightly to recommend this, I think we've, I've been saying it since the day I got here four years ago. That the rink is coming due, it's time. And I would hate for somebody to get hurt in the interim while we're trying to figure out a plan. Um, that plan can look a lot of different ways if we need it to. But it's becoming the reality, and I cannot stress that enough for the community.
I'm, I can advocate on your behalf of the rig safety when there's pockets in that ice. Following in smoke in your head. Even this year, and we only had a handful of playable Wednesdays for the adult league, right? For the pickle pond league.
I think you got six.
It felt like three, but you're probably.
Maybe you were there for three. But yeah, no, it's, it's not something. That I want to do, it's not something I'm looking forward to doing, um. We do need to figure out a plan, we need to figure out a path forward, um. This is why in my, all three scenarios, stressed so much in keeping the money in the capital reserve. To allow us the flexibility to allocate when and where we need to for infrastructure. The capital reserve is for all parks infrastructure, and you can see in my third scenario that I'm just asking to get it fifty percent funded. And to get it fifty percent funded off of a balance that's not even a total replacement for all park infrastructure. So right now, the capital reserve for the park is two hundred and eight thousand. That barely buys me the playground, not a new fancy schmancy playground, just replacing the five to twelve-year-old playground. So the, the costs are eye-opening on some of the stuff. Um, but yeah, to Joe's point of where do we want to. Where's the best bang for our buck if we need to start figuring that out? I can certainly dig up more information to help you guys.
Yeah, and it's just really about evaluating the true expense and what we have in all the areas of the park, you know, um. Between the ball, maintaining the ball fields or the hockey rink, you know, I, I'd argue if we actually kept track of the time. Cutting the grass and stuff in the summertime would be a much more expensive operation. Than maintaining the hockey rink in the winter time.
That's a much longer season too. At least double the amount of time.
Right, but that's, you know, just as we move forward with any decisions, you know. Starting to track some of that information, I think would be valuable to talk about and evaluate.
We, our maintenance staff does track on a minimal level where they, how they spend the time in which areas of. The park system they spend their time, so I do have that information for the past three years.
Those Zambonis are run by propane, aren't they?
Correct.
Amber, what do you think is a bigger draw, the baseball or the hockey stuff?
They both are, different seasons. You know, we're always, the Nisswa Lightning absolutely loves playing here, people love coming to our park, they love having. Um, the playground next to the ball fields, we get told all the time that this is one of their favorite places to play in the area. Um, with the Nisswa Lightning success, there's been other towns they've played with, that they come look at our facility like, this is where you guys play. And if you've ever seen New Ulm, New Ulm has a phenomenal. Stadium, and they're like, oh. Man, and you guys beat us every year with this setup, and so little perspective, you go statewide, we can't host. The state tournament here because we don't have the facilities. When you look area wide, people love our space. The ice rink, it's the best sheet of ice in the area. Especially when it was refrigerated and the Zamboni worked a lot better.
People still think it's the.
People still think it's the best, and so I can only imagine what it was six years ago, how awesome it was, so.
Name was less rubber marks on the boards from Fox.
So, hard to say, they're both well-used, there's al- always people out on the ball fields for various. That's where they disc golf, that's where they run their dogs, um. Little kite out there last month, like it's a green space, um. And then hockey, people love the hockey rink and they'll skateboard, scooter in it in the summer, pickleball in the summer right now currently, um. In general, people love Nisswa Park.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, back to my point, my train of thought to come full circle and. And what I'm thinking, you know, and I brought this up a year ago, that's why I asked about the maintenance or whatever. In this day and age, you know, the equipment needed, the time, the vehicles, the truck, whatever, to maintain the turf and stuff, you know, and turf maintenance and. And the fertilization and stuff too, you know. I would be very curious to look at is if we did bring in a subcontractor, an outside mowing service company. To maintain that park for us, give us a flat bid for the summer. And see what those numbers are and how that compared to the upkeep of a, you know. Of a vehicle, of a lawnmower, the mowing, the labor, the expense that we have, our overhead expense. Times, you know, twenty-three mowings in a season and look at it. I guess, I just know, um. Um, from what I'm finding out there, maintaining other properties like this in today's market and the number of people doing this. It's, it's super high, and you know, a lawnmower now is twenty thousand bucks, fifteen thousand bucks, I don't know, depending upon what we have, but. I just got a quote. Um, a quote from Owen, some of my properties that I have, and. I can pay on these properties to get professionally done mode and have no labor in it. And the cost would be over, the price of a new mower was eight and a half years. That I can get it mowed for before I'd have that lawnmower paid for in eight and a half years. We're turning over a lawnmower, does a lawnmower last eight and a half years to do it? And so I guess that would be one thing that I would look at, you know, just about how we're doing this. And at least get a quote, I know it's something we talked about, maybe it's not, maybe there's too many. Intricacies with the park or something like that. But that in itself could potentially be a cost savings, you know, if we just got that quoted, is everyone tracking what I'm saying? You know, I, I guess, you know, because we have all this additional overhead cost, you know, built into the staff, and. I, I, I think it's worth a look at, you know, asking some contractors.
Put it out there for bids and to see what it's going to cost.
I know when I looked into fertilization services, it was over fifteen hundred per application. And so when I looked into that aspect of it, it was, we already had the equipment, and that was more economical for us to do it ourselves. Um, so I can revisit this all certainly.
And also something just to remind the council of, and, and Tom can speak to this more as well as. A nuance within the city government is that we can buy equipment off of the state contract, which is significantly less expensive, so. That also, it's, it's not to say, you know, look at the contracting part, get quotes, you never know, um, but there is. A uniqueness to our operation that allows us to buy these equipment at a much reduced rate, so there's that to consider too.
Yeah, for sure, and, and that's where we got to kind of analyze all this, add up all the components, but. You know, as we're looking at stuff, I think that we just need to look at every different avenue and, and just see, you know, and. And ma- maybe it's not.
Well, we lost two. Yeah, the answer isn't necessarily, we're going to make the cuts here, but it's good to see the different scenarios and the impact and what it would be, and as Joe mentioned, if. Maybe the way that there's a savings is looking into something else for how we do things, right?
Well, and also, we just purchased the mower this year, so it's a brand new mower. So definitely something to keep in mind as we go forward, I know we've talked about it before, so.
And I think it just further reinforces, we need to figure out how to do this. Allied fundraising group or whatnot to help us do what we need to do with the parks, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Which is, that's a whole separate conversation, but, which we've already talked about, but need to continue talking about. Community Center.
Um, this one is pretty straightforward, it's a very um, relatively small budget, so there's. Um, the wiggle room in either direction is not a substantial amount of funds, um. Most of the increases are due to things outside of our control, um, with new communication contracts, utilities, um. Sales tax, things like that. So most of the cuts come from um, small reductions to the capital reserve areas, and then um. Maintenance and advertising.
What's the, can you really cut maintenance though?
It's trimmed.
Oh, and, and what, and the advertising? Six hundred is not, it's not a lot of.
No, most of the community center, um, advertising is split, we split one for weddings north with the pickle. And then there's one in the chamber that we split three ways with um, community center pickle and spirits.
Oh, okay, go.
But those rates keep going up, so.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, this one's just so small anyway.
It's very small, yeah.
I don't know, do you have any thoughts, Mark or Bruce?
I'll just address certain things with my report at the end of the meeting tonight.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, anything else for Amber?
Thanks, thanks.
Um, Jenny, did you show the pickle next or?
Yes, I do have the pickle, uh, pickle, spirits, police, public works.
Okay, Harry. Okay, Terry.
Well, good evening.
Evening.
So let's see here. Kind of straightforward. With the flat budget, um, I made a few deductions like with the pickle supplies. Uh, pickle nickel, I think when, once we change, we get the two nickels, it'll be more trackable. As far as amounts. Um, I took a little money off the transportation. Advertising, I I cut a little bit. So the the flat, the flat should still make a a great profit of about a hundred and, almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The only thing that would need to get fixed is on the pickle royalties. You'll see at the top, it's nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty. It's supposed to be twenty-two thousand across the board. So that's a difference of two thousand seven hundred and fifty. The reduced budget. I cut quite a bit off the merchandise for resale. What I plan on doing is getting rid of some items in the off sale that aren't moving. So that should help quite a bit. So I cut, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars there. Uh, operating supplies, I cut ten. At the bottom of the page, I ended up like six point ninety percent. Uh, basically cut the um, equipment out of the pickle, the capital improvement plan. I've got quite a bit in there right now. The only thing on my wish list would be, well, not really a wish list, it's kind of a demand. I met with the health inspector on Monday. Really nice lady, but she said, you've got to move on uh, with the walk-in cooler. Get that wood removed. So I've got to get a bid on that. And then also too, fifteen years ago, when I took over as a full-time manager, that's when we did the rubber roof. Uh, if we're not gonna move forward with a new building or whatever, we might want to look at replacing that. And I do have the money in the capital improvement plan for that. So that's about what I have. Yeah, I mean, the only concern would probably be the the merchandise if we cut back on that, but uh, like I said, even with a flat budget, we're still making a decent profit for the city, so.
So you said the mer- the merchandise, it's off sale or the actual like apparel?
No, the merchant, the liquor in the off sale.
Oh, the liquor in the off sale.
Yeah. And then we're still waiting on uh, the items for breakfast. I think the guy caught the same cred you had. He's kind of been like missing in action. Uh, the tables and tables showed up, uh, TVs will be here next week. And then uh, we go live with our new POS system on Monday. Twenty-first. Uh, I gotta go in at five in the morning for setup and then uh, we do live training that day, so. That'll be nice.
It's exciting.
Exciting, yeah, that's a good word for it, so. Uh, I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Terry, it's been a while, but um, since we've talked about the walk-in cooler, I'm trying to dig back in my memory. Do you have, uh, do you remember roughly what we were looking at for that improvement?
Well, I think I think we can get it done for probably thirty.
Okay.
Oh.
I was thinking forty, but okay, that's, it's expen- it's expensive.
I mean, all they do is they come in, they, it's just grommets. Pull it out, put the new ones on. So we just gotta pull the, pull the rails out that all the liquor or all the beer sits on.
Sure. Could remember, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we already got the brand new compressor outside, everything like that is ready to go, so. We just need to get a bid, so.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Brian?
First, what I just like to mention is each year I put in the budget, certain amounts for different categories. And if we look back for the last ten years, there's numerous, numerous dollars that were never spent, that were in the budget. And I'm a firm believer in, if you do not need to spend that money, it'd be stupid to spend it. So in a sense, you know, I have these three scenarios. And yeah, they're fine and dandy, but most of the time in my budget, I plan for the worst case scenario. So in the seven percent decrease, the flat, and even in the wishlist, those worst case scenarios were not taken into consideration. Just an example, last year, I think I had budgeted where I was projected to have twenty-six thousand dollars after, uh, profit after paying all expenses. And we had over a hundred thousand dollars. And I don't see that changing. Whatever we put on paper here is nice, but my goal is to make as much money as possible. Um, and, but not to compromise the attitude of the employees at Spirits and Nisswa or the product in there or how our um, customers come in and perceive the store. People come into our store and they're like, they have fun and they enjoy coming there and I wouldn't ever want to cut something that would compromise that situation. Now with that little speech being said, if we look at the seven, seven percent decrease, which I'm not cutting expenses, but I'm cutting, I'm not cutting um, sales, but I'm cutting expenses. And the only way for me to cut seven percent would be, the biggest one is cutting the merchandise that we buy. I could do it, it's not a problem.
Well, right, I mean.
I I know how those, how that goes, quantity, better pricing. Um, I wouldn't want to see us go down that road.
I agree a hundred percent.
No, I, I think there's, there's a keen difference here for your department, Terry's department and a bit on the sewer fund, I I suppose, but uh, you're a revenue generator.
About what?
You're, you are a revenue generator. For going this route of having additional merchandise to sell is going to decrease revenue, thus decrease profit.
In the long run.
I would consider this a cost of doing business to make money on said business, right? I don't, I don't see a cut here for this specific category. Exactly a viable route. That's uh, is there, I mean.
I I think instead of looking at the cuts, the goal would be how to make seven percent more. Than we did the previous year.
Right.
And I think that would be the best way to look at it. And some, and those are always nice goals, but we are at, you know, the um, jeopardy of weather and different situations that come about. It's hard to tell what this year is going to bring and what next, and it's hard to tell what this year is gonna bring, and we're doing the twenty twenty-six budget right here, right now. Um, if we go off of previous years, yeah, we can be optimistic and there's no reason we shouldn't be, but circumstances do happen. If, if you guys would like, I can go through each scenario and talk about it, or if you have other questions.
I I wouldn't say that in the area of the cut, you know, on, on, you know, like a retail business like this and stuff, I don't know. Yeah, liquor stores can stay open till ten P M. Is that correct?
Yep.
You know, but also too, you know, with your POS system, can you run a report on sales generated per hour? So let's take January, February, March. I'd be interested in what the sales generated per hour would be from seven o'clock to ten o'clock, Monday through Thursday in the winter time, and then what is our expense during that timeframe and look at it. You know, sure, we can stay open to ten o'clock, but are we actually making money from seven to ten, or should we be closing at seven for three months? And that is a way to cut expense overhead without compromising this and actually improve your bottom, bottom line. You know, and I don't know, do you ever, do you ever run reports like that with the POS system?
Look, we look at it all the time. And if, yeah, if you take a look at what we are selling from eight o'clock until ten o'clock in the middle of February, it's, doesn't make sense, but it also, in my opinion, doesn't make sense for us to deviate our hours. We like to follow whatever Shapers does. And I look at them, they've been in business for twenty or thirty years or more than that. But um, you know, they have evaluated and said, this, this is when our competition's open, this is when we're gonna be open. And if we started losing people from nine o'clock and and, or from eight o'clock till ten o'clock, those customers might go somewhere else when it's five o'clock. We, I wouldn't say we're the cheapest people in town for product, but we provide a service that I feel is as good as anybody else. And I wouldn't want someone to go down to Super One and say, wow, they have a gazillion loss leaders and sometimes I wonder how they make money, but they also have thirty thousand people in their backyard. We don't have that luxury, so. Thought long and hard on that, and we've had many discussions, but I would not advocate for that because I don't want to lose a customer that is normally going to be coming during the day. And if by chance we were not open, they, the other thing is they want to depend and not have to wonder, are they open or not open?
Sure. So financially, it doesn't make sense during that time, but then also to that time, you know, what's the staffing ratio, you know? So if we are gonna stay open, you know, and and we're not profitable during those hours too, are we just staffing it with one person during those time?
Never. Uh, we'll never put a one person on duty at a liquor store. The Pickle Factory has a nice scenario because they might have ten people in their bar. And they're regular people, there's regulars that go in there. If something ever happened, they would have the bartenders back. So we're in a much different scenario where we have a six thousand square foot building. If you have one person in there, just an exa- couple of scenarios, you have three people that come in and one's distracting the employee, well, the other one's filling their bag full of five hundred dollars with a, a booze. And we have two people on, you can control that. And I still go back to about fifteen or twenty years ago. There was a lady up in Pine River at the municipal liquor store and she was working by herself. And we haven't seen her since she walked out the back door. Somebody, somebody did something to her. And it's our policy at work to always have two people on. We do make exceptions for that, but that, those are exceptions for the safety of the employees.
Yeah, and I just bring up all these scenarios because that's more of a, you know, cost savings, you know, to look at.
And literally, I have looked at a million ways to to cut costs over the years. I'm not saying I haven't missed something because there's always something out there, but um, and I appreciate the questions, but we have looked at those and I'm more than willing to have any one of you stop in. Just let me know and we can go through the reports and I can show you anything you'd like to know.
I think then, you know, another way to look at it, like you talked about, it's a revenue generating stream in the city is we gotta just grow sales, right? And we were talking about like doing that online or the pickup or the delivery and things like that. So I think there are ways that, you know, like we did with the pickle, with revising the twenty twenty-five plan. If there's a way to grow sales even incrementally, sure, costs stay the same or similar, right? But we're adding more that way.
And like it, like I mentioned earlier, there's always room for improvement and I'm not saying we're doing things rapid down there. But I do stand by with our past history and I'm a tight one. And I look at everything, I negotiate with our vendors to get the best price. And if there's opportunities out there, I'm always trying to do it. So those areas that um, we're talking about, I work on all the time. Of going back to, can it be improved? Yeah, but it's not going to be drastic. And I I always like to say, if, if all of a sudden we can make an extra two hundred thousand dollars, then I wasn't doing my job last year.
I think that's, I think that's the point of when we were in the last liquor, liquor meeting of the liquor delivery, sales, contacting the attorney, our, our city attorney, try to get some legal feedback in regards to is this feasible? What liability will the city bear? What liability can we buck off to the other carriers? The DoorDash, Uber Eats, Instacarters, the, what's the Muni one that you guys had?
Oh, um, City Hive?
Yep. If you factor that into your business model, that is like straight vertical growth. Because that is not foot traffic that, it's foot traffic that maybe would have come into the store, but is now not, possibly. But also a whole array of folks that are coming here staying at the, the resorts that are like, oh shit, we forgot to stop.
And I agree a hundred percent. Um, we are still.
Where are we at with that?
That's where I'm going. Uh, we were, we are still waiting for legislation on the vi- the responsibility and who's viable. If something did happen as far as an underage person got liquored, or if somebody was intoxicated and they were sold a more liquor. And then they went out and hurt somebody who is responsible for that. And it, there's not, it's still going through a legislation. We were hoping that it, once we handed it off to, let's just say DoorDash, that they would have a hundred percent of that responsibility, but it, because it, at one, in the past, it has been no responsibility for them. Sure, would the family come back and sue them? They would, but um, they'll also, they would also sue us. So right now, going through legislation proposals is a shared responsibility, which still is not very good, but um, soon as we get finalization on what has been passed, then you know, I definitely let the liquor committee know, but.
Is that, is the legislation regarding all carriers or is it the City Hive concept?
It's all carriers.
All carriers.
Yeah.
Have you had any conversation with Tom Pearson?
I have not because um, I'm pretty much going with what's, you know, what the laws are out there right now. I mean, I could talk to Tom, but it, in reality, and we're, we have to go with what the law says. And uh, right now, there is still a responsibility. Now DoorDash and those other companies are supposed to have a picture of the person with their license and um, that's the way it's supposed to go, but I have heard some horror stories and they're probably far and few between, but there are some out there. And do I, do I think that's something that we should um, city should say, yeah, we're gonna take on that with a possible risk? I'm not saying no to it. I'd, I'd just say that we, we have to get all the information. And I was just waiting to see if there's new laws coming down. But it's something that we should decide before summer. If, if there's no change in the law, we should, we should have a liquor committee meeting and decide, okay, these are the risks and are willing to take those risks or not.
That's kind of where I'm at and getting that opinion from our already contracted city attorney, I think will be helpful for, you know, the say, the next, next liquor committee meeting. I gotta imagine there's gonna be some steps to be able to get these set up. And when you look at your specific budget, that could, that could provide some substantial revenue increase, thus margin.
So I will send an email to our ci- city attorney and um, get some feedback from him on it. Because it was ironic, on our last liquor committee meeting, I had gotten some information and literally I was out of that meeting and a half an hour later. I had information that was contrary to what we were talking about the other meeting, so it, it's still very gray. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think police is next. Todd?
Good evening. I came up with uh, the three different scenarios here. The first one was the reduced. Uh, in order to hit the seven to ten percent, the only way I can do that is with staff. Uh, if you take away employee-related costs, wages, insurance, para, stuff like that, uh, leaves us with a little over two hundred and three thousand dollars for the remaining costs in our budget. Uh, if you cut an officer out, it will bring it down approximately ten point nine six percent. With that estimated little trickle-down effect um, through some of the other categories in the budget, um, things like. Things like fuel that would be saved, certain subscriptions and whatnot that are. User based on numbers. Uh, if we were to go down to five, it would have a couple of different scenarios there. Um, one, we'd either have uncovered shifts when people take things like vacation, sick time, are gone for training. Um, if that were to happen, the sheriff's office would be responsible for covering calls. They're already stretched thin as it is a lot of days. Um, so you're probably going to see. Significant increase for response time from them. Um, some minor calls, you know, they may not. Get handled till there is a NISWA officer back on if it's not something that needs immediate attention. Um, also going to de- decrease our ability to provide services. Um, for the events in town, which are only getting bigger, like Freedom Days and City of Lights. Run for the Lakes is another one that we help with. Um, the other option with that is increasing the overtime budget. Um, which is going to cut into that savings, obviously. Right now, I would estimate vacation time, just that alone's probably close to nine hundred to a thousand hours a year. Um, just to cover that. So if you looked at about sixty dollars an hour, probably for an average overtime rate, depending on who's working. Looking at sixty thousand dollars added back in right there. Um, everyone likes a little overtime, but it's going to involve people switching back and forth between nights and days. That's not healthy. And it's going to lead to people getting overworked and burned out as well. The second one, I have the flat budget. It includes the wage increases and insurance increases that Jenny provided. That one with all the adjustments with retirements and whatnot. Here, we're looking at about a point five two percent increase. And then the third one, kind of a wish list items there. Um, some of the things we're looking at. Getting that we presented last year. Were the flock safety cameras. Um, they are. Basically cameras that would go in a fixed area around town. Um, they can be used to. With license plate readers, they can provide you information if a stolen vehicle drives by. Uh, Amber Alert vehicles, um, people who are missing or endangered if there's a vehicle that's registered to them. It can help with. Other crimes that are committed, um, you know, maybe you find out about a burglary the next day. Um, if someone says they saw a red SUV with a yellow sticker in the back window. Uh, you could put that information in if there was any pictures of that car matching that driving past the camera, it would provide you with that. Um, and hopefully a license plate off of that, which would be identifiable. And the other thing we're looking at is a storage shed. We're out of room in our garage right now. We have. Plastic, hard plastic seats that go in all of our patrol vehicles. They take all the other seats out. We have them stored in the garage right now. Um, along with our radar trailer in there and two parking stalls, so everything's. Kind of filled up right now. It'd also be used out at our shooting range and to keep a lot of our no parking signs, stuff like that in. Um, and the other thing we're looking at is possibly some more stop sticks. Um, for vehicle pursuit type things. We have two sets now currently and looking to be at four more, so.
Todd, with this, with the shed, have you ever looked at those Conex boxes for storage?
The what?
Conex boxes. Um, Conex boxes are what they use, wh- what shipping companies use. Because you could get a, I can get a ten, actually I can get a twenty by forty for two grand.
Okay.
Um, there, there's a possibility to get that at a lot less than the, the sixty-five hundred. If I remember, we'll, I can come in and we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
A great option.
Could, because there, there, you can secure them a lot better metal. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I finally have an idea.
I think your department's one where the increased budget makes sense. And didn't you, when we had talked to you, it said that Lexipol software, though you didn't think you needed it anyway, or you didn't need to keep it, so.
Mentioned that there, but yeah, we could, could ax that one if.
And we had talked about an idea and Joey, you and I had talked about it too, even how the fire department does all these fundraisers and. It helps pay for like their trucks. Maybe we try doing that, one for the police department and just see what happens.
Yeah, we would also have to create like a foundation, nonprofit type of thing as well to do that, I think, so.
Departments have a kind of a carve out and stack to allow some of that, yeah.
Okay, okay, maybe not. But that your increased budget, even so, it's not significant.
None of your officers want a bike instead of a car?
We, we have a couple of bikes in the garage still, so.
Flowed that one out there.
You have any thoughts on that? Okay, anything else?
If you, if you want, uh, to explore any Conex options, I have a ton. We use them on all of our projects.
Yeah, I'm definitely open ideas.
Yeah, they're amazing. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Tom. I feel like we're not going to have enough time. I said, Tom, Tom needs a meeting in and of it.
Oh, you got.
His own meeting, right?
Plenty of time, just. Go with the wish list.
All right. Um, so I wrote a memo just kind of to highlight how I approached this exercise. Um, so I started off just by looking at the core functions of public works. You know, what do we do? What do we do for the city? What? Why do you have a public works department? And, you know, obviously it's, um. You want a quality efficient road sewer system, um, and building system for the city and this one's constituents. And, um, so with that, I started digging into, you know, what? If we were going to cut ten percent, well, what would we give up? So trying to preserve those core functions first, I looked at, well, what isn't part of those core functions? And one of the things I came up with was downtown garbage service. And I highlighted that in my memo. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to read that. But we spend approximately seventeen thousand dollars a year on downtown garbage service. Uh, we don't provide that service. Anywhere else in the city, not for residents, not for businesses down by the stoplights, thirteen and seventy-seven. You know, it would be the place I would cut if I had to cut that much. One of the reasons I'm doing that is. We're not hiring back one of our people and the garbage service is a labor intensive service that we provide. And so to me, it made a lot of sense to do that. And like I just alluded to, the lion's share of my cut to get ten percent came from hiring back. Uh, a man that we had just gotten permission to hire back in June of last year. So. Um, with that, I've been able to hold, um, all of our basic functions. Um, about even with what they were last year. We wouldn't have a lot of room for growth. We're already hitting some pretty high numbers with overtime. We just don't have enough man, manpower to really, uh, respond to everything that people would like us to do. You know, for instance, uh, manning, uh, events and things of that nature. It will short us a little bit on, uh, vacation coverage when we have people that are sick or hurt. Chances are you will see me out and about doing work under a ten percent cut scenario. In the sewer department, um, I've cut out, uh, two trucks that we were looking at with growth, with lift station twelve. With station twelve, if you recall, is, um. A lift station would be needed to serve the new property the city bought. Um, right now, I'm assuming that under a ten percent cut budget, we're not going to be building a lift station twelve at this time. Um, and so I've put those items in reserve for now. Um, I've also cut upgrading one of our air release structures. We've been systematically replacing those year after year. Uh, for thirty-five thousand, so we'll hold that for one year. We've also held off on, uh, purchasing any kind of elective equipment that we sometimes get, such as, uh. Uh, vehicle attachments, portable pumps, that kind of thing. So we'll make do with what we have that way. Um, the rest of the cuts in the sewer department came from, um, change in our, uh, personnel. Uh, with one mic retiring, one mic getting promoted. So there's a little bit of savings there. Um, looking at our flat budget scenario, um, if I can maintain a flat budget or something close to that. Uh, probably wouldn't be necessary to make it to cut the downtown garbage service. Um, we would add that back in. I would allow for purchases of office equipment if needed under that scenario. Um, I had also cut under the ten percent cut budget. Our repair maintenance supplies to a level probably below what we would actually spend. So in this case, I would put that back. Professional services had been cut. We could restore those, um, county and state road project funding, I had cut that. Trying to get to that level. Um, also under the ten percent cut scenario, I cut the wages for a public works committee. We would eliminate the committee. I cut some money out of the cemetery for, uh, future projects. Would restore that under this. And also under the flat budget scenario, we would continue to pursue, uh, a lift station one rebuild in the sewer fund. I didn't really provide a wishlist so much because I think for our, for us, the wishlist stuff always ends up being these large capital projects. Such as the road bonds. So I think those are larger discussions that you all will need to have as far as what you want to do with those. So I just listed them out here. And then there's other related expenses to that, you know, for instance, if you do build two new lift stations and some other things. You would probably need more equipment and manpower to operate that, so. With that, I guess I would look for, um, questions or comments, thoughts?
So with, with the garbage, you're already short people staff wise this year to even do that service?
So we use our seasonals too, but, um, we have, you know, under our current budget, we have the manpower to, to deal with it through twenty-five. If we go into twenty-six. If, if everything else continues to increase because you still have, uh, new roads that are being added. Um, for instance, you know, we got the new development off of eighteen, so it's more plowing, more people to call my office looking for things, trees down, whatever you got. So if I'm at the limit of my labor. I still have to respond to those calls. What can I give up? Well, something that seems optional to me is the, is something like downtown garbage.
Right.
And it's, and it's easily available. Privatized.
Correct.
And it's heavily, heavily abused too. That's one thing I wanted to bring up here. Uh, we have people dumping household trash in those cans. Um, we have certain business owners abusing that, filling them up with coffee beans right to the top. So we have to use a Tommy gate to dispose of them.
That was my next question. Is it being abused like the recycling was?
So I feel like if they had ownership of that can in front of their business. They would try to prevent some of that from happening. Not saying it would be perfect, but obviously where there's ownership, there's, there's concern and care.
If, if, if the downtown trash was removed, would the receptacles still stay?
I would say, um. We could work something out to provide those to businesses that want to retain them for whatever reason. Uh, once they're wore out or no longer good, we wouldn't replace them because some of the expense that I list out there is the replacement of cans.
Yeah, I reached out to a few business owners just to say, you know, hey, what do you think of this? Or business, you know, the people that own the buildings? And they said to me, if it saves a seventeen thousand a year, I'll go empty the thing myself every day and throw it in the dumpster behind my store that I have to pay for anyway.
Yeah, I, um.
But then the chamber was like, but we're, you know, because there's a bunch right around the chamber building, right? So then they don't necessarily have a dumpster, the rest of us do, right?
Right. So we would continue to maintain the ones in, at the pickle, for instance, because it's city property.
Right.
We would maintain the ones at the pocket park because that's also city property. But I think beyond that, if there's one to say in front of chocolate, ah, or A and W or wherever they may be. You know, probably would make sense to have them take care of.
Is there a way to switch the cans out and just let, uh, service deal with them all, meaning? That you guys don't have to touch it. I mean, I see you guys emptying them all the time through town. Where service would just come in and just grab them like any other place and just deal with it to. Still provide a few around town, but cut the, cut the labor force on your end.
Um, potentially, I talked to Dre Logi a little bit today about, about this. He called me. And so we talked about it a little bit and I said, you know, to me, it made more sense to push it into the property owners themselves as much as possible. If we maintain a service, say we were going to hire them to do the downtown garbage cans. I don't think the impact to the budget would be nearly as great. You know, they're going to charge something for it too, because we get a lot of during the week calls, you know, out of cycle with the service. And we, we check them daily, but there are times we'll get called at four o'clock at night, the can is full, stinks, whatever, you know. Would we get an extra cost for that from our haul, right? If we were to hire one as a city, I don't know. Certainly we could look at options for that service. Um, I just scratched the surface of what we could do here.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like big cost, especially if it's getting abused, you know, it's kind of, kind of like the recycling. You know, let's try and provide something, but if people just keep abusing it.
Well.
Right, doesn't make sense.
Kind of to give you an idea of what the volume is for this, so we have a very large dumpster out at our shop. That's for these cans and then in the summer, when we hit peak season, there's two more dumpsters here for garbage service. That the city pays to have dumped frequently, so. It's a lot.
Right.
And we've been adding cans every year too, so businesses have been requesting more and more cans. As they see fit. We haven't said no to anybody at this point.
I feel like there's a lot more with Tom's, but we only have like four minutes. So I feel like we need to reschedule to like do a deeper dive into public works because we kind of got cut short on time here.
To give a workshop.
Yeah. Are you okay with that, Tom?
Yeah, I was just.
Sorry, not to, I mean, yeah, but finish up what you have.
I was just going to suggest something with the computer not working. You know, I have a presentation that I was scheduled to do this evening too. And it's very heavily focused on visual aids.
Okay.
Um, if you were going to do a workshop, that would be a good time to have that too.
Okay, so we can move that.
Largely on the twenty-seven road bomb.
Yeah, we could do that maybe in the next meeting or something. Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else?
Yep.
No, thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Say it.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, they're adjourned.